Now five thirty, time for us to begin our city council meeting. Welcome to everyone that's here and if anyone else is looking online. Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, thank you. And as noted, Mr. Childs is joining virtually today. So we have a full council here this evening. Could you all please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by our very own veteran, Councilwoman Dr. Belinda Creighton Smith.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah!
I didn't realize. I know, I understand. Mr. Mayor, sir, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty four, regular council session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? We have an agenda. Right now, it is time for public comments. It's your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda related items. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, four eleven Almond Waterloo, Iowa. First wanted to ask Chief Duncan, did you get an opportunity to communicate with the chief on independence on the Marionette Harris estate? Okay. That starts me right where I want to begin. The Thirteenth Amendment of the United States abolished slavery in eighteen sixty-five. Still today, I'm being treated as if I'm a slave when I look at the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States, which guarantees citizens equal and fair protection under law. What I ran into as I described everything from a criminal organization to a machine to a mafia, but I think the most fitting that I lately heard was an enemy from within. And the way I get to that is the people who are involved with violating my Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendment. The biggest one that I can say at this time that has done it is Judge Kellyanne LaCarre in two different cases, MHO thirteen two eighty-eight and the sale of my farmland in which I didn't get equal and fair protection under law or due process. Also, the part that the police have played in this, the sexual assault that was committed on my daughter, Jody Van Velzen, who too, I believe at this point is a veteran. There's several veterans in here since we speak of it. That's where I come to the enemy from within. Because the other veteran who was a Marine was Hesse. Another Marine, Dan Treckle. And there's been plenty of blacks in the neighborhood that I see of getting a little boost on their little money that they get for parts that they have played. But these right here, Jody Van Velzen, who set up the sexual assault on my daughter, is in the Army Reserves as we speak. So when we speak about the enemy from within, some of them are veterans and some of them are even in my family and some of them have told me what was going on. In Des Moines, there's a gentleman I haven't got a chance to get to or communicate with. His name is Dustin and I was told before I left Des Moines that he was a Marine veteran and he was very much bullying my son, also a big Kansas City fan. We'll get back around to that later on. But as far as my rights being violated, at some point, I need to be able to get an understanding of why is it that I cannot get assistance from law enforcement to simply call another officer, this police chief, who wants to investigate the fraud that happened in the sale of the farm? My time is getting short, so I want to get on down the road. My damages are not just limited to me. Over these years, there've been many people in this community who have been affected. For them, I'm going to pray that they stay strong and be able to stand up for themselves and for our enemies. I pray that God destroy them real quick. In Jesus's name, I pray. Amen. Amen.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I'm here on behalf of Advance Waterloo. We are a small committee that is trying to convince the citizens of Waterloo to change our form of government so that we have a city manager who is hired by the council, responsible to the council. We are not opposed to the mayor, but at the same time, we think that this person, and it's proven fact, that this person could save us a lot of money by knowing what he does because most of the mayors that we've had are not versed in construction, all the different things that are involved with the city other than just running it. Two mayors in Cedar Falls were in the paper a couple of years ago or a year ago that they were in favor of that. Council Bluffs and Waterloo, Iowa are the only two cities of our size in the state of Iowa that do not have this form of government. I am sitting in polls tomorrow. I urge all of you who have not voted to vote, so I'm going to take my leave. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items going a second time?
Beverly Cosby, three fifteen Window Court. Actually, I just have two questions. One question, is there an update on the All-In Grocery? And number two, is there an update on KBBG?
How would I? I would definitely ask for you to reach out to the KBBG Board of Directors and Staff and also to the developer with All-In Grocers. I would, if you want an update, I would talk to them. Right? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Thank you. Thank you to those that came to my ward meeting. Sorry, I'm home again. I have gout this time. Just can't get a break here. But we will have another ward meeting at the end of the month. I need to check dates real fast just to make sure Thanksgiving. Yep, yep, we'll be good. The last Saturday of the month, we'll have another ward meeting or office hours. If you have any questions or concerns or things you want to talk about with the city, please show up at Ridgeway Sidecar on November thirtieth at noon. I would like to give a shout out to Waterloo Fiber. I have some constituents that have Waterloo Fiber now. They have it in their house. It's working tremendously and great job on getting hooked up and really excited to see it spread across the city.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to share that our Ward Four meeting is November twenty first, six o'clock at the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center, who graciously host us every month. So please get out. Hopefully, we will have someone there from Waterloo Fiber to give us an update as to how they're developing in Ward Three because I have a lot of constituents asking about that and then also constituents asking about All-In Grocers. And I will be talking with Mr. Rodney sometime this week as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And then for everyone that lives in Ward Three, again, our ward meeting is November twenty-fourth at four P.M. Originally, I said five thirty, but I believe the library closes at five? Library closes at five. So that was my mistake. The meeting is going to be the last Sunday of this month at the Waterloo Public Library at four P.M.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A. One bills payment for October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three million eight hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents and for November fourth, twenty twenty-four, four million one hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
I would like sixteen A. to be discussed separately. That would be the next level liquor license.
Right. So we have a roll call vote on all those items except for sixteen A. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bozen?
Yes. I wanted to.
We need to bring it to the floor.
I'm sorry. Let me open it back up here. Apologize for that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the next level liquor license at two twenty-nine East Fourth Street, Class C, with outdoor service and Sunday sales.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Mr. Bozen?
I'm just going to pass these out. Could you take one and pass them along? What I'm passing out is Waterloo Police Calls for Service. And I contacted our chief and asked to have these pulled up. I not only had the next level at two twenty-nine pulled up, I had the Screamin' Eagle pulled up because if something's happening across the street and the Screamin' Eagle calls it in, it gets logged in through dispatch at the Screamin' Eagle. And then I also, on the Calls for Service, I have the intersection of East Fourth and Sycamore. And if anyone follows social media and you see some of the violent attacks and fights that have gone on in there, I was, I debated, but I didn't think it would be appropriate to show them at a council meeting, but they're out on social media. Some of the problems is, is when there's incidents in there, the police aren't getting called and I'm speculating on why they're not getting called because this last incident a couple Saturdays ago, that someone from Des Moines put a video on social media and they said, never again Waterloo. That never got called in for Calls for Service, that big melee that was going in behind the bar with all the fighting going on. I am not in favor of renewing this liquor license based on the Calls for Service. I've had friends of mine that moved in downtown on East Fourth Street in that hundred block in the loft apartments and they couldn't get out of there fast enough because of all the activity, the noise, the things that are going on in there. We want to clean up our downtown. We want to have an inviting environment. When incidents happen in a place like at the next level, it affects across the street. It affects Screamin' Eagle. It affects across the street, El Patron. It affects Jamison's and it's even bleeding over and affecting areas as we move towards Anton's Garden and it's affecting some of the businesses on West Fourth Street because it creates a negative image of our downtown that people don't want to come down here at night and it bothers me. And I, so I'm not in favor of the renewal of this liquor license and I hope this council supports it. Keep in mind that they can appeal it and the state can grant them, but we also have the avenue of going to district court under the chronic nuisance and dealing with it that way, too. So I'm asking for your support on not approving this liquor license tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
The owner of Next Level Lounge is here. Could we have her speak to some of these things and see if there's anything that she's doing to prevent these things from happening?
If she would choose to do so. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Bobby Mayberry. I am the owner of Next Level Lounge. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is my son, Darrell. He is also the manager of Next Level Lounge. The reason that the police didn't, were not called, I guess we were totally in shock. It seemed like it was a motion pitcher and everything happened so fast and it was, so much was going on and was moving. And by the time we looked up, the police were already outside. I reached out to the police chief as soon as possible to get in to talk to him about what was going on. He then directed me with Chris Roberts, a detective, which I'm working with him. Also, we have implemented different things, actions in place for us so we can stop this. We're not trying to bring a negative aspect to downtown Waterloo and we're doing everything that's in our power to make sure that it's not going to happen again. I hired more security. I got sixteen cameras that's up and going, trying to record. I'm working with the police department. I even had a conversation with the police chief to ask him a couple months ago when we were having issues about hiring off-duty police officers to come in. He told me that was not anything that they offer. So my hands are tied. I can't, I can't be responsible for people's actions. Only thing I can do is make sure that I'm trying to prevent people from coming down, doing different things, and I am. I have some things that we are putting in place now. Can I hand these out?
Yeah, give them to the police chief.
The people have been notified that we're involved in the activities. They are barred from our establishment. If they are bought back or try to come back, I will have charges pressed against them for trespassing. We've, like I said, we hired more security. We got more footage as far as for recording and any suggestions, I'm open for it.
Mr. Mayor, maybe the police chief could help us. I know that routinely, we could, you could hire off-duty police officers. Could you speak to that, Chief, while she was told that you, she could not?
This is Rob Duncan, Chief of Police. So establishments that have liquor licenses, it's a regulated industry, so we can't technically work for her because it's a bar. Police officers aren't authorized to work in bars. You know, we give extra attention downtown as much as we can, but it only goes so far. So that's the reason why we couldn't work actually in her bar.
So is it special events and those types of places where you see police, off-duty police officers working?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So it seems like you're making an effort to curb these issues, but how recent have these efforts been met? Because is this something that you've? I don't have Facebook, so I don't see these videos or things that happen. So when did you implement these things? Have they been, if it's been a while, have they been successful? Have they not been successful? I mean, I want to support downtown businesses, but if we're causing issues for the entire downtown, then we have something we need to talk about here.
So I guess the question is, he doesn't have social media, so he doesn't know exactly what's happening or what the incident was, but he wants to know what efforts have been tried already and these things that are listed here, are these already in place or is this something that you're going to do?
They are, some of them are in place and some of them we're introducing as far as us checking IDs, making sure that we do not take paper IDs, we do not take IDs on phones. Also, we're thinking about changing up our dress code policy to make sure that we're not getting the people that want to come in and cause a chaos for the establishment. We're trying to do whatever we can do to just make it a safe environment for everyone, not trying to cause chaos to Antoine's or anything across the river or even right next door.
So Councilman Childs, some of the things have started, but some of these will be things that will be utilized moving forward. You don't have the sheet, but there's a strategic plan called enhancing safety at the next level in GRIL. One is assessment of current environment, two, staff training and management, three, security measures, four, enhanced policies, five, collaborations with local authorities, and six, patron engagement. So there's a list of things that are planned to be implemented. Mr. Nichols?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll let him go since he. Yes, sir.
All right. So the main thing I want to know is when were these new things implemented?
That's what she said. Some of them are, some of them are implemented and some of them are going to be implemented based upon the most recent incident. So she's putting together a plan to tell, to talk to the council and to the police on how she's going to change these things. So some are, some are not.
So has it been a week or two weeks like that, like an actual duration? A day?
Over two weeks.
Over two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
Yep. So thank you. I think Councilman Bozen handed out these incident reports. I'm seeing some things on here related to Screamin' Eagle, Next Level, and then just the intersection in general. I was wondering if the police chief could speak to some of these things that are traffic stops that are located here and kind of distinguishing between the different types of outcomes on this report?
Sure. Rob Duncan, police chief. So the way we have to pull the data is, this is just Calls for Service. Yeah. It doesn't really matter if it's a call for a traffic accident based on what Councilman Bozen asked or a fight, shots fired, all that kind of stuff. It's all pretty much added just directly to this report. And then if you look, you can see the disposition description is probably the best bet as far as how in-depth that whatever call it was that we dealt with. I don't know if that helps it or not.
So like if it says assisted, that means something was done. If it says no report, it's a lower level. Report initiated is kind of in between there?
Yeah, report initiated is going to be something where we actually had to do some type of specific report. Anything where it says no report, there's nothing founded or they just didn't see the need of a report to be done. It could be something more general in the call reporting. I kind of went through most of these and noted a bunch of them. Some of them were traffic stops, some of them were accidents, some of them were suspicious calls, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Are you done, Mr. Nichols?
I'm done. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess to kind of add on to that, with all of these calls being between Screamin' Eagle, Next Level, East Fourth Street in that intersection, how are we to say how many of these actually came from Next Level? Because there's over eighty-two calls on this sheet. Like, how are we to say that they all came from that establishment?
I would have to say probably very, very, very few unless it was two twenty-ninety's Fourth, which is the next level.
I mean, very few what? I'm sorry.
Very few calls would have come from Next Level unless it says that address.
So we don't know if like the ones under Screamin' Eagle or the ones that are in the intersection have anything to do with this bar?
I don't think they did from the research that I did. It was pretty much if it was two twenty-ninety's Fourth, that's the next level. Anything else?
We can't say if that was next level or not.
I don't believe they were.
So we really need to disregard like at least fifty of the calls on this sheet that was handed out to us?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I disagree.
It's broken down in categories. So the first category is two twenty-eight East Fourth Street. The second category is two twenty-nine East Fourth Street. The third category is based upon the intersection. Like you, you see it says East Fourth and Lafayette, has the name, warned and advised, suspicious. And so it's broken down in that. The calls that were initiated from, from the bar or regarding the bar is what the caller, I would assume, stated when they called in or made an emergency call, correct?
Yes, either that or it's our officer saying it's that address.
And I understood that part. I guess I just didn't want to, as I'm looking through these four sheets, I didn't want to assume that they were all because of this establishment if there's a chance that they might not be. And I understand the categories and things like that. I just, I didn't want to look at them for calls that might not be theirs.
Yeah, if I had to, and I didn't look at every single call, but most of these calls, unless it is two twenty-ninety's Fourth, probably weren't directly associated to the next level.
Okay.
They were some other traffic stop or accident or something like that in that area.
Okay.
This is just a generalized capture of that area at that time.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor. Let's go Mr. Foyce and then we'll come to, he hasn't spoken yet.
Yes, Mr. Mayberry, your question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So when I look at the strategic plan and then I look at, and I'm just looking at the Calls for Service at the next level, there seems to be many that are, excuse me, after the hour of midnight, essentially from midnight to one. As part of the strategic plan, has it been, have you thought about maybe closing earlier and then?
We have done that. We have done that. And what we do is we, like I said, part of our plan is try to be our awareness. When we start seeing the movement and activities and we start seeing a crowd of people gathering together, we turn the lights on and we shut down and we ask people to leave. A lot of the incidents happen as we're exiting the building, they're exiting, or they're happening while they're outside loitering and things spill over into the street. And I was told that because it's been shown that they came out of our establishment, that I'm held liable for it. We have no loitering signs outside. We've asked security to go outside and ask people to please leave, but if they're going to stay, they're hanging around, they're hanging around for trouble. A lot of things are happening. We're unbeknownst to us. We're inside cleaning up. The doors are locked. They're outside. Next thing we know, a fight's broke out. And my staff, do we go outside? No, we call the cops and then we get cited for that. Or the people across the streets, they call the police because it'll spill into the middle of the street and they're stopping traffic or it'll go onto their sidewalks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That was my next question was if they call the police, will it be counted against them? If they've called the police for service to get assistance, is it counted against them? Does it show up here and then say that they have too many calls because they're calling the police for assistance?
Mr. Chief?
No, that doesn't count against them. If the business or the homeowner or something like that is the one that calls, then that doesn't count.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Police chief, if I may. So when the, yeah, sorry.
It's all right.
So when this is broken down by the Screamin' Eagle, Next Level, in the corner of East Fourth Street and Lafayette Street, is that where the call originates from or is that the caller saying I'm calling from that area or how do you attach that to that address?
Yes, basically. There's, it's not a simple answer. Either the caller said, this is where it's at, this is where I'm at, traffic stop is at that location, so yes.
And so the city of Waterloo, when we've had previous things where businesses have had police calls in excessive amounts, does the city of Waterloo have, the police department have a limit or a number in mind before action needs to be taken place? I mean, if somebody's drunk or disorderly on the sidewalk is different, that's within shots fired, obviously.
Right.
So is there a precedent set for businesses?
Yeah, the city has a chronic nuisance ordinance that we follow. It's three or more within a year. It, I don't know that we've ever done it for just three. It's usually a lot more than that. And Bobby and I have sat down and talked, we talked for probably about an hour, hour and a half in July. And, and Bobby and I have sat down and, and talked, uh we talked for probably about an hour, hour and a half in July about some things. And there was really no problems until uh this last October. So she's done some good things on there. My, my recommendation for her was yes, close early, please, cause that's when all the problems are.
Yeah, I, I'm with, with uh, with Councilman Ray Voice on that. I noticed the times as well, obviously.
So typically what we do, if we're gonna do a chronic nuisance is we'll sit down with the owner um or the homeowner and say, hey, this is coming your way, here's a warning, another one, and we're gonna have to go through with it. And then we also have the state chronic nuisance law. It's pretty, it's pretty new. We did that with flirts. And, and we've talked extensively about that and that's, that uh basically will shut her down at ten. And we talked about that in July and, and like I said.
So we have, so we have something already in place, so.
Very much.
Uh with, with, with these folks bringing forth the objective, you've, have you seen this list? Have you gone over this with them at all?
I would assume it's some, some similar stuff that we've talked about in the past.
Very good. So, so your recommendation is they're on the right track of trying to, to fix any possible problems? So do you have any other suggestions after you look at this? Is that something that would be open dialogue with the?
Yeah, and the, the biggest thing for me was in, in talking to her and uh Rome, and I think it was at the, the owner of the building, was just to shut down early, cause that's when all the problems are, are a little bit later. So um and since July, we haven't had a problem until uh here a few weeks ago. So yeah, I mean, all that stuff helps, but the uh, the later it gets, it seems like the worse it gets.
I mean, just from having you folks come here and explain what's going on, any business owner wants their business to be successful. And they know better than anybody that if any, you know, bad press on social media or anything like that is not good for business. So I, I think they're being proactive in trying to fix that. Um so I commend them on that.
Yeah.
And I, I think as far as, you know, the, the city of Waterloo and that corner, I think that's in everybody's best interest to keep that as safe as we can for the, the people from out of town that are visiting, for the people that are in town that like to visit down there.
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm asking is, you know, it's probably, we're relying on the police department to, you know, follow any precedent, work with the business owner and try to make that as safe as we can. Cause I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna not give a liquor license to a business that's trying really hard to make money and, and, and bring something to the, to the downtown area. That's just my gut feeling, but I also don't want to endanger the other businesses or the people that, that use that down there. So it's kind of, it is a tough issue. Obviously, we're here, we're talking about it, which is great. So I, I, I appreciate your input on all that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, when everyone's done.
Yes, yes, sir.
So looking at, at, let's just isolate two twenty-nine, okay? And, and I, and I go through the calls for service and, and weapons shots fired, fight in progress, disorderly conduct, disorderly conduct, disorderly fight in progress. I mean, but these are all, when you look at these, and they're all different dates and some of them are recent. We're not closing early, correct?
In July, we were, when we talked with him, he had, the police chief, he recommended that we close early.
But you're back to your normal hours, correct?
Right, correct.
And, and the other thing on this, on this plan, and I commend you on this plan, I don't, I don't see anything on this plan to limit weapons coming into your facility.
We pat everyone down and we also warn everyone. No weapons are, will be bought into our establishment.
We have two security guards at our front door at all times. There's one that's outside the establishment and then there's one that's inside. The guard that's outside checks bags, the guard that is inside, he does a full pat down from shoulders all the way down to your ankles, so.
Hey Chief, was it, was the, was a weapons violation inside or outside? Was that started from inside or did that happen on the outside?
The shooting happened outside.
But then again, our, our chronic nuisance through the state clearly states that inside the building, outside the building, on city right away in front of the building and the areas around the building. So if it, if something spills outside and the fights out front, that, that's still, even though it's not, that, they didn't call it in, someone else called it in, it falls under chronic, the state's version of the chronic nuisance that they passed because it's on the city right away in front of that establishment. So.
The video shows somebody driving up, driving, driving, coming down the street, getting out and shooting.
And people shooting back.
Right, but it, it um, so we don't know if they were, so but the, the, the question is, question is um, there's an abatement plan, you know, council, council has their druthers. I think um Mr. Jackson would like to say something?
Yeah, when it, when it comes to, we have issues like that. A lot of our issues solely stem from us being closed and people being in close interaction. Like my mom has said before, we have a security team. They tell people to leave and to get out of there. Sometimes you have people that are respectful, they listen, they move their way. Then you have people who want to cause problems, who want to have issues. Once it's, once it's outside, we can, we can do what we can to prevent it, but what someone chooses to do in their own actions, that's on them. I can't, I can't control them. If they can't control their alcohol, there's no reason they should be out. We do what we can to make sure that those problems stay outside. And if they never come inside, I, that, that, that can't fall on us.
Right.
And that, like that shooting that he's speaking about, everyone involved in that shooting, A, never stepped in our bar, never once stepped foot in the establishment. And B, everything happened after hours, about ten, fifteen minutes after our establishment was closed. We can't precede someone getting shot or a shooting happening, cause we, once our doors are closed, we worry about our employees and everyone on the inside. That's, that's our main focus. So if someone decides to be a knucklehead to have something like that happen, I can't stop them, cause I, I'm not gonna see it coming. So a lot of things that happen outside of here, we're not aware of. People's personal issues, people's personal problems that they wait until they're all in public in one setting and try to ruin it for everyone else, because that's, that's not our main intention. We have a bar in the establishment because we want to have fun. We want something to do for our people in our community. And it's not just African Americans, it's white, black, Hispanic, everyone. We want everyone to come and have a good time. But sometimes on a tree, you're gonna have a few bad apples. And I just feel we should not be getting punished for those few bad apples that we try to keep away. If something happens, we check our cameras, we check faces. You're not allowed back in, you're done. And it's not just a, a weekend bar, it's a lifetime bar. There's no getting off that bar list once you're on, there's no coming back to apologize to make things right. Once you're out, you're out. So there's, that, that's something that we're taking very heavily, we have since we opened and that's just something we just want to express to you guys, cause it's, we understand downtown is the heart, like where we're at is the heart of downtown. We get it. But we, we want to succeed just like everybody else. So when you have people that don't respect the business, you want them out completely, not just our establishment. We don't want them at Screaming, we don't want them at El Patron, we don't want them at Festers, or even on the other side of the bridge. So that's just where we're at with it. That's what this whole plan kind of lays out. Because in the end, I want everybody to enjoy downtown just like I do.
And so um, uh Chief, I don't know if they still have the classes when we talk about the staff training and management about overpouring, um and how much and the detection to be able to see that. So, yes, ma'am.
We have addressed that issue also about the overpouring, which I've gone out and got those little shot cups. And we give no love. And that's what you're getting, I'm sorry. We're giving no love.
And then I'm coming to, okay.
And, and so now, now that, that has been established, that if you call it in, it's not going against you. So if you've got so-called knuckleheads out front at, at closing time and, and you think there's gonna be a problem, it's, it's, it's no, it's no harm on you
Right.
to notify, to get, to get an officer over there before something happens.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it's important that you, that, that, that you guys are, that it's, it's, it's not counted against you under chronic nuisance if you initiate the call and are having a problem in there.
Can I address, um, a lot of times we're, we're inside and we're cleaning. We're getting, we're trying to get it together, pulling garbage, doing different things. We notice the people outside, but by the time we actually notice, the interactions are already happening. And we, the police are somewhere around the corner, driving up and down the street. And we've gotten to the point where instead of, they know that they're coming, they take off down the sidewalk. And then the police surround two twenty-nine East Fourth Street and they come in being aggressive. And we're trying to explain to them, nothing happened in, in here. It happened on the outside. And actually, they're walking down the street. But you can't get them to understand that because they're so focused on two twenty-nine East Fourth Street being the problem. We're not the problem, it's the people. It's bringing their problems to two twenty-nine East Fourth Street.
Well, I think, I think you made a, a very good case to the council that you are aware, you're trying to make an impact. When they get a call to come to two twenty-nine East Fourth Street, it is to come to rectify the problem or the situation. So long as you understand that.
I understand that.
And I think you have a police chief that seems to be open to try to work.
Right.
In regards to Mr. Bosin's last comments and under number five, you could add um have somebody, Mr. Jackson or somebody, take a look outside to see if there could be earlier intervention.
You can do that.
Cause I know you're cleaning, you have everything going on, you're running a business. But I think to that comment, adding earlier intervention when there's a crowd that gathers and, you know, it's a challenge because people just can't stand outside and relax. It's downtown.
Right.
But the challenge is there's been problems that have happened. And so earlier intervention, I would add that as another bullet point that you can engage more based upon uh quicker, based upon uh Councilman's suggestions. But I mean, we've had a plan. Is anybody, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. M- minds pretty much were the same as Mr. Bosin's to have, um since the calls of s- for service are not gonna be counted against you, to have someone, as you mentioned, outside.
Right.
Right, and as, if they're not moving and if things start to escalate, just call right away. Uh don't hesitate, don't wait for it to happen. Call right away like you're doing, like you want to do. Call and then that way, nothing will happen.
Sir.
If, if Chief's done, you had mentioned, you touched upon something about when the police enter the building, you said they're aggressive?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're making it seem like the problem is happening inside. A lot of times when you're calling, they ask the question, where is it happening at? They'll say, oh, in front of Next Level Lounge. So when the police come, they come and they, actually, one of the incidents, some gentleman, they started pushing and shoving outside and they did this, this antics. No punches were ever thrown, but by them doing everything, someone from Screaming Eagle's called. And by the time the police come, they had walked down the sidewalk. But we had seven police cars surrounding two twenty-nine East Fourth Street. So when they came in, we tried to explain to them, nothing, it didn't start in here, it didn't happen in here, it actually started at, at the stoplight. And then it spilled over into the street. And the gentleman was trying to get away from the other gentleman. And they went down the sidewalk, um headed towards Roth Jewelers. And we tried to explain to the cops, they're walking down that way.
I just wanted to make sure that
Yeah.
that's conversation that you have with the police chief in your, in your regular meetings, like what the interaction is to, to, to focus on the, the fixing the problem and that.
Welcome them, at first when we opened up, the police were coming in, they were walking up and down the street. They were coming in and they were doing safety checks. Um and come on in, you know? Because if they see the, the police are visible, then they might not wanna do anything to cause a scene.
Yeah, it's always tough to have the, the right balance of police presence and not, another business is.
Right, they can't babysit two twenty-nine.
Sure.
Um but you know, they're welcome to come in. If they're riding up and down the street, hey, stop in, walk around. The doors are open because we're not trying to cause any confusion. We want help.
Yeah, I've, I've had, I've talked to, had conversations with other bar owners and there's a fine line on, you know, police make some people nervous, they don't drink as much, they don't come in there, you know?
Come on in.
So there's a fine line to, to what you wanna do and that's, that's good that you're looking at that. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh Mr. Mr. Childs.
I think just one last thing. Uh a lot, these resolutions are great. They sound like they're going to, their, their intention is to fix problems. But I would really advise pondering on why these problems even happen in the first place and trying to find the root cause and fix that. Uh thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the questions.
Right. A motion's been made with the second. Um Madam Clerk, uh roll call vote on this item.
Mr. Bosin?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So uh best wishes and uh look forward to moving forward. Alright. Okay, uh also uh with regards to the consent agenda, we have Adarsh Tumala, Tumala, which is uh going to be a planner one with the Community Planning and Development Department. If you're here, please stand up. We have Richard, Richard Wagner, uh Construction Foreman and Leisure Services, please stand. Colin Weber, uh Solid Waste Tech uh for um, what department is that? Yeah, Public Works, uh and Kenneth Van Dees, uh uh Park Maintenance Two Position. So uh, is anyone here? We have Mr. Rick Wagner, you are here. Alright, so we want to say congratulations on, on your appointment. We look forward to uh having an incredible working relationship with you here for the city. So thanks for joining the team. Alright, uh it is now uh public hearing time. Could someone please, yes?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file, proof publication, a public, notice of public hearing. And that is for Terminal Security Upgrades Project Contract Number five eight one nine um I dot C S V I grant.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to uh comment on security upgrades? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution for the approval of the specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Uh Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file and instruct the city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Miss Deputy Clerk?
Yes, the engineer's bid for this project is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. We had one bidder, K and W Electric Inc. out of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided a five percent security bid or a security deposit. And um their bid was five hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
That's a little bit more. Alright.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion for the resolution rejecting the bid of K and W Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of five hundred thousand, five hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars in conjunction with the Terminal Security Upgrades Project Contract Number five eight one nine I dot C S V I grant.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. I'm sure this is going back to the drawing board to see what's going on. Madam Clerk roll, Madam Deputy Clerk roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for demolition, demolition and site clearance services, contract number D dash twenty twenty-four dash ten dash zero six P.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on demolition and clearance services? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor? Sir. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Uh I'm really happy to see these coming down and I couldn't be more happier to see three twenty-four, three twenty-six, West Seventh Street has a blight, has people come.
as a blight, as people come into our downtown area. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to seeing a, a, a marketable lot right there.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols? Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, he said amen.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, like to make a.
Oh, we need to read bids, don't, wait, no.
Not yet. Like to make a motion to receive file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Okay, I don't see an estimate, um, for this. We had, the first bidder is Door and Associates, Inc. out of Bay City, uh, Michigan. They provided a five percent bid security. Their bid amount was two twenty three, two hundred and twenty three thousand, three hundred dollars. Our second bidder was D W Zinser Company out of Walford, Iowa. They also provided, provided a five percent bid security. Their bid was one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Third bidder Hatch Grading and Contracting out of Dyzerd, Iowa, five percent bid security. Their bid was two hundred and thirty one thousand, six hundred dollars. Next bidder was Lehman Trucking and Excavating, Inc. out of Waterloo, Iowa, five percent bid security. Their bid amount was one forty six, two hundred and forty two thousand, one hundred and forty six thousand, two hundred and forty two. Our next bidder was Walker Reclaim and Demo LLC out of Iowa Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent bid security. Their bid amount was one hundred and twenty two thousand and ninety six dollars. And our final bidder was Earth Services and Abatement out of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided five percent bid security and their bid amount was two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to D W Zinser Company, Inc. of Walford, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, approving the contract, bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with demolition and site clearance services, contract number D dash twenty twenty four dash ten dash zero six P for properties located at seven O eight West Third Street, three twenty four through three twenty six West Seventh Street, six seventeen West First Street and two hundred East Mullen Avenue, city owned properties, and also one hundred Commercial Street and one twenty eight Sycamore Street, uh, Waterloo Development Corp. Owned properties and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the demolition and site clearance services, contract number D dash twenty twenty four dash ten dash zero four P.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on demolition services? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions on this item? All right, uh, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Like to make, make a motion to receive, file and instruct the W C D clerk to read bids?
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Okay, we have six bidders for this project. The first bidder is Door and Associates, Inc. out of Bay City, Michigan. They provided five percent bid security. Their bid amount was three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Second bidder was D W Zinser Company out of Walford, Iowa. They also provided five percent bid security. Their bid was one hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars. Third bidder is Midwest Demolition Contractors, Inc. out of Walford, Iowa. They provided a five percent bid security. Their bid amount was two hundred and eighty three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Fourth bidder is Hatch Grading and Contracting out of Dyzerd, Iowa. They provided five percent bid security. Their bid amount was four hundred and forty eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Next bidder was Lehman Trucking and Excavating, Inc. out of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent, uh, bid security. Their bid amount was three hundred eighty four thousand and eighty five dollars. And our final bidder is Benton's Sand and Gravel out of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent bid security and their bid amount was two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to D W Zinser Co., Company of Water, Walford, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars, approving the contract, bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the demolition of and site clearance services, contract number D dash twenty twenty four dash ten dash zero four P for properties located at one O five East Eleventh Street, uh, one fourteen East Tenth Street, one hundred East Ninth Street, AKA one O five East Tenth Street and twelve O two Sycamore Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. I, I've never seen a AKA for another street. Been here a while. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Spiff, Simon, sorry.
I think it's kind of spiffy.
Ms. Wilder? Ms. Wilder?
Yes, you said Ms. Walker?
No.
And Mr. Voice? Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, and we'll make sure, uh, Noel will reach out and get you the actual bid estimates for those. So, you know, number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to receive and file proof of publication and of notice of public hearing for the agreement with Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments to utilize city property for transit vehicle parking near thirteen twenty five Black Hawk Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak towards this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt a resolution approving a property use agreement with Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments to park transit vehicles on city owned property near thirteen twenty five Black Hawk Street, expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, sir, 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 sir. I look right at you.
Do we know what type of vehicles these are and the number? Is that something, I, I mean, I don't know what it is that is going to be parked there, the number. And the other question I have, if this is all continuing, we can amend the, the, um, agreement if we get a development agreement, correct? That's what I read in the, uh, so is there a way to amend that if, for any other reason? That if it's, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know what kind of vehicles these are and how many there's going to be. Isn't that just a?
Interco, they, well, just have some vans and some buses as well. Is it an old on?
I, Noel Anderson, can you play the development director? Yes, uh, it's the Met Transit and R T C service, so Intercod does the R T C services. It's basically where, you know, it's, it's door to door, um, when you can't quite get to the, to the Met services there out there.
Can't tell what? I didn't hear that.
So it's right next to, no, t- tell people where this is located next to and why this is a good location, uh, for some of their fleet.
So it's, Intercod runs a system basically for people that are unable to physically get out to the bus stop. Um, so it's, it's a little bit more of a standardized system, R T C in Gettysburg, in the big county. Um, the site that we are partnering to let them use is, uh, right next to our, our gas wing station, uh, set up there at Black Hawk and Eleventh Street. Um, this is a storage yard area that we were using, um, that we're not using as much anymore. It's fenced in, so it's safe there. It's right next to Met, so there's some, some shared amenities there that, uh, Intercod may be able to partner with Met for their, uh, car wash, bus, bus wash system and all that. So it's, it's a great location for them to, to utilize. Uh, the former site that they were using, um, is no longer available for them.
Yeah, so it's, it's right next to all the, the fleet, the Met Transit vehicles already.
So it's an open field now? There's nothing there currently, correct?
Correct.
It's, it's a fenced in area, so it's like just open.
Okay.
gravel park.
Uh, well, they, do they, um, Sheila, I didn't know what, um, do they use, are they able to use any gas or anything we have at that site? Or do they already do that? Or has that been offered to them? I didn't know if they had a pump already.
Sheila Stefan, Public Works Coordinator, I'm not aware that we are selling fuel to them at the moment, but I believe that conversation is taking place. I don't know if Noel is aware that, if we are or not.
I, I was going to ask the same question. I, I think we've talked about it. I'm not sure that they, that they're actually doing it. Obviously we do, but the county, um, and, and schools and, and the city all partner with that site.
Yeah, they're right next to proximity to the pumps as well, so, all right.
I guess I just, I, I just don't know how many units are going to be parked there. I mean, it looks like a nice, well kept area right now. We've got a new bridge going right next to it. I just don't all of a sudden want a parking lot with vehicles.
Well, it's already, uh, right next to Met Transit too, so it's more of a, I won't say an industrial area, but it's more or less parking, parking trucks. That's our fuel station, uh, there as well. But definitely want to make sure, to your point, the upkeep of that area, uh, but it's already, that's why.
Is it a hundred vehicles? Is it ten vehicles?
No, can you, um, can you get us a response tomorrow?
I'll give you a number, it's probably closer to, to ten.
Okay.
Uh, uh, and I'll, I'll get you a number, but yeah, they, they actually helped upgrade the fence already out there for security purposes on this part of it.
Thank you for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Um, and so these, these buses, these are those white buses with blue writing that they, they go, that are around town?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and, and my question is for Noel, and it has, we've got that lot right across the street. Who's, who's, who owns that lot now? That used to be our, our central garage right there.
That was purchased by Jim Starless, um, for redevelopment. He obviously, he paid for it. Um, he is behind on his development agreement to actually fix up for an active tenant. I'm not sure if anyone's actively in there at this moment.
He's behind at least a year in his development agreement, minimum.
Well, and it goes to where I think you're going, would they be interested in that site?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Right, so, no, that's a further conversation too. Would they be interested in, uh, uh, buying that site for their usage, so? All right, um, um, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And really quickly, the bid estimates for that first item was a hundred and sixty thousand and the bid estimate for the second one was four hundred thousand, so those are the numbers. All right, could someone take, uh, one through three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make, adopt the following resolutions. A resolution approving a farm lease agreement beginning March first, twenty twenty five and expiring February twenty eighth, twenty twenty six for Lane Haven Farms to farm approximately seventy point two five acres of land located east of forty seven nineteen Ainsborough Avenue at three hundred dollars per acre for an annual rental payment, twenty one thousand, seventy five dollars and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number two is adopting a resolution approving a development agreement with Kent Dirks and the construction of a new commercial building with tax rebate schedule fifty percent for five years and a minimum assessment agreement of, of five hundred and seventy four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars located at thirty one sixty nine West Airline Highway and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number three is a resolution approving a project demolition agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity for the demolition of properties located at five twelve Almond Street, two twenty two Randall Street and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on items one, two and three? Going a second time, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes, sir.
Question for Noel, who, who got the lease payments last year? Especially on the, on the area that's supposed to be developed that they planted corn on?
So.
So they get the lease payment last year, um, while it was transitioning over, um, for the, for the area that was farmed.
I can't understand what he's saying.
Can you repeat that, Noel? It was very difficult to hear you.
The, the city of Waterloo got the lease payment.
For, for all of that land?
Everything that was farmed, yeah.
Okay, okay, that, that was, that was my question. And, and so this southern portion, the seventy point, point two five acres, it, it appears i- if we don't cancel this and, and by February twenty eighth, twenty twenty six, it, it extends automatically. When will we know when they're, when they're going to start developing south?
But now everything in the phase one, um, is, is geared toward, you know, that first road going in as a rise road. We're working through the Iowa Department of Transportation for that process. And then, uh, the majority of the, the project could be right up near Inco or north of that road. Um, obviously, you know, it, it probably depends on how fast, you know, we can get construction going, get buildings built and filled out there to go to the next set of buildings. Um, so it's kind of just being in constant contact with the developer and then keeping, uh, the farmer aware of, of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes, sir.
The, um, the three hundred dollars per acre, Noel, uh, is that something that we just extend to that, to the, uh, Lane Haven Farms? Or is that something that's a bidable item? Does people can bid on what they would be willing to pay there, depending on what the, that corn produces or that, that field produces? Or is that just something that we just arbitrarily come up with the three hundred thou, three hundred dollars?
Definitely send it out for bid. We annually check what farm prices are renting for throughout Black Hawk County, especially, uh, working with the, uh, I'm trying to think of the name of the office down there on, uh, sixty three South heading to Hudson. Uh, but we go through them to see what the annual prices are for rentals and find out, you know, obviously if we have a rental that's right at market rate or a little bit higher, we don't bid it back out. If it gets, if we get to one where it was rented out for lower and they've gone higher, then we usually bid it back out.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any further questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes. Uh, will somebody take four and five, please?
Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is resolution approving an encroachment agreement with, uh, Danielle White to allow for a fenced gazebo and swing set on city owned property in the R dash two, one and two family residence district and A dash one agricultural district located south of six O one Cedar Bend Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that, said document. And number five, resolution offer approving a professional service agreement with A E Com Technical Services, Inc. in the amount not to exceed six hundred and sixty seven thousand, nine hundred dollars[1607.40] to complete engineering and survey work related to the University Avenue TIF, New University Avenue Area TIF Districts project and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. Uh, excuse me, any public comment on items four or five? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Bozen?
I, I think we should delay five. I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We're running into an agreement to put a roundabout at Kattowski and Green Hill for the Waterloo schools. And we don't, we got an election tomorrow. That, that, I didn't see a clause to, to, to pare down this if, if the, the school bond doesn't pass. I, I just, I just think we're, we're pushing into this myself. And I think it's a, it's a, it's an extremely large amount of money for, for the design because they're all, it also states in that, in the agreement that they're not doing any of the construction, uh, uh, management portions of it.